The Thursday, October 10th, 2019 work session will begin. It is recommended that the school board approve a motion to enter into closed session. Closed meeting for discussion of matters covered under items A1, A2 of Section 2-2.2-3711 of the Code of Virginia. Designation, appointment, performance, disciplining, and release of contract for specific school board employees, the admission and discipline of special, specific students. Do I have a motion? Move by Ms. Cox. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We are now in closed session.
All right. We will now reconvene. Let's first come out of closed session and certify, is there a motion to certify that none of those items identified in the motion convening closed session were discussed?
So moved.
It's been moved by Mr. Pike. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Reverend Cooper. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We do need to go out of order for just a bit and go back to the top of our list and to approve the agenda as presented. Members of the board, is there a motion to approve the agenda as has been presented?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Pike. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Cox. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The agenda is approved. And Madam Superintendent, I believe that brings us to your first item.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good afternoon, members of the board. The first item, I'm seeking approval for administrative appointments for personnel for the 2019-2020 year.
Members of the board, you've seen the superintendent's recommendation as well as those appointments that she's seeking our approval for. Is there a motion to adopt and approve the superintendent's recommendation for administrative appointments?
So moved.
It's been moved by Reverend Cooper. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Cox. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The appointments are approved.
Yes, thank you. And the board has just approved Dr. Elizabeth Parker, Director of School Counseling, Melissa Armstead-Williams, Associate Principal, Holiday Elementary School, and Dr. Christina Saunders, Elementary Language Arts Specialist.
And we look forward to those people being brought to our next monthly meeting.
Yes, we'll look forward to introducing them to the board. For the next item, the superintendent is requesting that the school board approve the expulsion of student case number 19-20-S-1 for violation of the Code of Student Conduct. The name of the student is protected under the Virginia Freedom of Information Act.
Members of the board, we've heard the superintendent's recommendation as well as have reviewed the material regarding the recommendation for expulsion of student 19-20-S-1. Is there a motion to approve the superintendent's recommendation?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Pike. Seconded by Mrs. Cox. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Eyes have it. The motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is the recommendation that the school board approve participation in an alternative education program for student case number 19-20-S-1 for violation of the Code of Student Conduct and, as was the case before, the name of the student is protected under the Virginia Freedom of Information Act.
And members of the board, you've heard the superintendent's recommendation. And of course, we're pleased to be able to offer, even when our students are under an expulsion, to be able to participate in an alternative program. Is there a motion to adopt the superintendent's recommendation for student 19-20-S-1 to attend an alternative education program?
So moved.
Moved by Reverend Cooper. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Pike. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Eyes have it. The motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is the recommendation that the school board approve the readmission of student case number 16-17-S-10. Name of student protected under Virginia Freedom of Information Act.
Thank you. And again, it's always good to be able to welcome a student back. Members of the board, is there a motion to approve the recommendation for readmission of student case number 16-17-S-10?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Pike. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Reverend Cooper. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Eyes have it. The motion carries. And that completes the student matters.
All right, thank you. For the next item, Mrs. Lammy is going to come forward to offer an opportunity for the school board to both review and discuss any priorities or changes to the legislative agenda for 2020. Welcome, Mrs. Lammy.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Dr. Cashwell, back again. And we're still talking about how we are going to construct our legislative package for the next session. The last time we met, you all gave me some very, very good guidance as to what maybe we could start to really flesh out and include. I thought I'd just kind of mention those to you again briefly. Mrs. Ogborne had asked about making sure we include the list of the unfunded mandates, that we are working on getting details put together with each one of those items. And we're going to get that hopefully in your package when you get that in a week and a half or so, two weeks. I wanted to make sure that there was accurate information shared about our Unified Pay Plan with teacher, for teachers. Just had a conversation today with our finance folks, and we're going to try to get together from staff and make sure that we've got some very accurate talking points so that we'll have that accurate information to share with our legislators. That'll be very helpful. As we especially talk about teacher recruitment, retention, and of course, I think everyone that I am working with right now is talking about teacher salaries. So just try to make sure we get all of that accurate information. Mr. Pike had mentioned a little bit about the suspensions. We had talked about student discipline, I'm sure is going to be continuing to be a very important topic of our legislators. We left some legislation on the table last year, the disorderly conduct legislation, that a student could not be charged with disorderly conduct. We're going to go back and try to get some more details to share with those legislators that are very interested in that. Mrs. Cox had mentioned elementary planning time, seeing if there's any more interest in trying to build that in. And Mr. Montgomery, you had mentioned about the governor's school funding. It's amazing when you start turning over rocks, what you start finding. And I just had another conversation this morning with Ken Dickey at Department of Ed about the history of the governor's school funding. So we're hoping to bring you some details with it in our package. But I think that I will find very helpful for me, as I've always said, that package becomes my script, you know, when I'm going to talk to legislators. So hopefully, we're going to have a lot more detail on that. And mental health services and things of that type, have a call into the county to kind of see, one of the legislators had asked about the process, that if a child is in need of special services, whether it's social services, mental health, or whatever, felt the school division feels like maybe that would be something that would be helpful. We need to know how that process works, what really happens. So trying to do a little bit of research about that. And I think really, that kind of covers what we discussed the last time we were here. The SRO issue, I think, is certainly still with us, but I really do feel that one of the things that we're going to try to go back and make sure we're investigating is there was a bill left, and it was passed with no funding. And that has to do with significant training for SROs, no funding attached to it, but it also spilled over to significant hours of training for every school administrator. And that carries a hefty price tag. So we want to make sure that we know and help legislators understand that when you pass a bill like that, its implementation is for the school year 2020, there are costs attached to that. And making sure that they understand so that we can get the budget people, if they want to move forward with that legislation, to make sure that there's money and funding in the budget. Okay? But I'm open now to any other suggestions or any other issues maybe that we did not cover the last time.
Board members, anything new come up or any questions follow up there? Mrs. Cox?
Hi. I wanted to ask about the, us getting to the 1 to 250 ratio for our school counselors. And I know that last year, they had funded it for the one year, but the governor had proposed it to be a three-year phase-in. How, how are we going to go about in supporting that, or what can we do to help get to that ratio?
And that is one of those bills that went through within all good faith, and it was to be a significant process of three years. They were going to try to significantly reduce the numbers of the counselor-to-student ratios. Well, the bill went through, but the funding did not. So we are going to have to get, in fact, I have a call into Susan Hoag, who's a finance person on the House Education side. And I'm going to try to ask her what, because she does have a lot of, she gives them a lot of advice and help with creating the budget. How are they going to work through that? Is the bill just going to stand there, you know, with no funding? Because it will be back again this year, because it's still in play. It was supposed to be a three-year process. So definitely on my radar, I'll make sure, make another note of that.
Thank you.
Any one else? Well, very good. Well, thank you for your work. We look forward to the next update.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Yep.
All right. Thank you, members of the board. The next question, or the next item is the review of school accountability ratings, it's a mouthful, for the 2019-2020 school year. And Dr. Hinton's coming forward to do that. And that'll be followed by a review of the cohort graduation and dropout rate. So welcome, Dr. Hinton.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Dr. Cashwell. On September 30th, the Virginia Department of Education released state accreditation ratings, including performance levels on school quality indicators. Federal support and improvement designations under the Every Student Succeeds Act are also being reported on the Virginia Department of Education's school quality profiles. Dr. Caden and I will be providing you with an update on the ratings for Henrico schools for 2019-20, based on data from the Virginia Standards of Learning Assessments and other growth measures from the 2018-19 school year. Henrico's work to achieve full accreditation for all schools is one of our eight strategic plan goals, and is currently being proposed as a key performance metric of our 2018-25 strategic plan. The school quality indicators that factor into school state accreditation include English, math, and science for all students, achievement gaps in English and math, and chronic absenteeism, which is defined as the percent of students missing more than 10% of the school year, regardless of the reason. Additionally, for the 2019-20 ratings, high schools were measured on the Graduation and Completion Index and Dropout Rate. A ninth indicator for high schools will take effect with a 21-22 ratings to assess college, career, and civic readiness. Each school quality indicator receives a rating of Level 1, meaning they're at or above the standard, Level 2, near or improving, or Level 3, below standard, based on a set of performance criteria that varies by indicator. Overall, school accreditation ratings are determined by the number of indicators at each level. So when every school quality indicator is either in the Level 1 or 2 ranges, the school is accredited. When the school has any school quality indicator in the Level 3 range, they are accredited with conditions. And in order to be accredited with denied, the State Board of Education has to take that action based on the school's corrective action steps. In Henrico, we are seeing multiple areas of success and growth. Eighty-eight percent of our schools are accredited. All of our middle schools are at Level 1 for math, as well as chronic absenteeism. All of our high schools are accredited, and at Level 1 for English, math, and science. Eighty-four percent of our schools are at Level 1 for English, 97% at Level 1 for math, 94% at Level 1 for science, 91% at Level 1 for chronic absenteeism, and 89% of our high schools are at Level 1 for the Graduation and Completion Index. We have one school, Ratcliffe Elementary, who moved from accredited with conditions to an accredited rating. They achieved increases in the four English and math indicators. Ratcliffe saw a seven percentage point gain in English and math for all students, as well as noteworthy gains in the English and math achievement gap groups for the Black, Economically Disadvantaged, and Students with Disabilities subgroup. They attribute their success to common planning time for teachers, to work with Title I and District Coaches, school-wide reading initiatives, a strategic focus on data, and increased family involvement, to name a few strategies that they felt have led to their success. We have three elementary and five middle schools who are accredited with conditions. This table shows each indicator and the level each school received, based on student performance and growth. You'll note that English continues to be an area for improvement for all of these schools, as well as the achievement gap groups. Looking more specifically into school performance related to the achievement gap groups, this graph shows the number and percentage of schools at each level. The area where a majority of schools will continue to focus their improvement efforts are with students with disabilities. Additional focus areas include the Black and Economically Disadvantaged subgroups. We see the same areas of focus for mathematics. However, in math, the majority of schools received a Level 1 rating for subgroup performance. And as we look forward to next year's ratings, please note that beginning with the 2020-21 ratings, based on assessment results from the 2019-20 school year, the state will be adding a new subgroup called Multiple Races. And this will be included in the accreditation model moving forward. So with the data that we've been sharing with you, if you are a student and you identify as, let's say, both Black and White, you are not in either the Black or the White data. But moving forward, those students who identify as being multiple races will now be included as their own subgroup. And Mr. Caden will now discuss federal accountability and school supports.
Good afternoon, Dr. Cashwell, and Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen of the board. I'm going to be talking to you about the federal identification of schools under ESSA. And I would like to begin with these results have been posted as of this morning on the school quality profile pages. So the lowest 5% of Title I schools, plus any high school with a federal graduation rate below 67%, are identified for comprehensive support and improvement, based on the performance of all students. Schools are identified every three years and are eligible to exit after two years. Henrico has two schools identified as comprehensive support and improvement schools. Those are Glenley Elementary and Wilder Middle School. Schools with low-performing student groups are identified for targeted support and improvement annually, beginning this school year. Title I and non-Title I schools may be identified on an annual basis, based on the results of two consecutive years. Schools are eligible to exit after one year. Henrico has one newly identified school as targeted support and improvement, and that is Laburnum Elementary. Additional targeted support and improvement schools are identified every three years. From among schools identified for targeted support and improvement, any school with one or more student groups performing below the level of the highest-performing comprehensive support and improvement schools is identified for additional targeted support and improvement. Henrico has three schools identified for targeted support, additional targeted support improvement. Those are Elko Middle School for Students with Disabilities, Fairfield Middle School for Students with Disabilities, and Roth Middle School for Economically Disadvantaged District supports have been developed to address and target specific achievement gap trends identified in Henrico County Schools' collective data that include, but are not limited to, extended wraparound services are provided through the Departments of Family Engagement and Equity, Diversity, and Opportunity. The culturally-responsive education model promotes intentional actions in the areas of content integration, knowledge construction, prejudice reduction, equity pedagogy, and school empowerment. And instructional coaches are provided to differentiate support to teachers. And collaborative professional learning communities have been developed to support the co-teaching process. Also, all Henrico County public schools are utilizing the Virginia Continuous School Improvement Plan process, which has been updated to ensure that all staff members are involved in the development, the implementation, and the monitoring of school-wide goals based on their data. I'd like to thank you for your attention today, and we can entertain any questions.
Thank you. Members of the board, are there any questions for either of the presenters of the material covered? Yes, please, Mr. Pike.
Dr. Hinton, you mentioned with the improvements made at Ratcliffe, the importance of family involvement. Did they specifically list what those might have been?
I don't have that information specifically. I did ask, talk to the principal about some of the data that they've been collecting. They've been collecting data to actually show the increase in family involvement in their school. And so they're using some of that involvement as attributing to some of their successes that they're having.
And does Ratcliffe have a family advocate on staff?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pike. Are there others? Okay, very good. Well, thank you for sharing. I know that there's still some work to be done in that area, but also, I know that individual board members have had conversations about various items as well with the superintendent. So thank you for presenting that today.
Thank you. All right, thank you. And next will be information related to the graduation, the cohort graduation and dropout rate. And I think Dr. Hinton is now joined by Dr. Farrell for that presentation. Thank you.
Good afternoon. Today, we'll be presenting about the cohort graduation and dropout rates. The Virginia Department of Education publicly released this data for the State Division in School Levels earlier this week, on October the 8th. As a quick reminder, the Virginia on-time graduation rate is a rate based on individual student data tracked over time that accounts for student mobility and retention patterns, and is also adjusted for students with disabilities and English learner students who may take longer than four years to earn a diploma. The cohort rate is a longitudinal calculation for students who entered 9th grade in a Virginia school four years earlier. So the data shared today is from the 2015-16 9th grade cohort. Students earning a board-approved diploma, including Advanced Studies, IB, Standard, Special, and General Achievement diplomas, are considered graduates. Students who earned a GED certificate or completed high school without earning a diploma are not included. In 2019, we had 3,622 total graduates, resulting in nine out of every 10 students who entered the 9th grade in 2015 earning a diploma. Of those graduates, 58% earned an Advanced Studies or IB diploma, 40% earned a Standard diploma, and 2% earned a Special diploma. Over the last 10 years, Henrico has seen steady improvement, increasing from 86% in 2010 to 91% in 2019. However, from 2018, we've seen a 1.5 percentage point decline, which is concerning. And in a moment, Dr. Farrell will share the student supports in place to address this The cohort dropout rate includes former students who were enrolled in school at some point during the previous school year but were not enrolled as of October 1st, were not enrolled on October 1st of the previous year, although they were expected to be in that membership, and who have not graduated from high school or completed an approved educational program. The dropout rate is not an inverse of the Virginia on-time graduation rate, because as I mentioned earlier, students may complete school with a GED or some other certificate, but they are not included in either the dropout or the cohort rates. The dropouts do include any student whose latest status is unconfirmed, meaning that they were reported as a transfer to another school division but discontinued public schooling In 2019, Henrico had 266 students reported as dropout or unconfirmed. This is an increase from the 216 dropouts in 2018. This table shows the graduation and dropout rates for major student racial, ethnic, and socioeconomic groups. The columns labeled as difference provide the comparison change from 2010. Please note that students are double counted in this data if they represent multiple groups. So for example, a white student with a disability would be counted in the All Students group, the White group, and the Students with Disabilities subgroups. Additionally, Modified Standard diplomas were no longer an option for students with disability, beginning in the 2013-14 grade cohort. Increased graduation rates are evident among the All Students, Asian, Black, and White groups. However, declines are noted among the Hispanic, Students with Disabilities, Socio-Economically Disadvantaged, and English learner groups to varying degrees. Cohort dropout rate trends generally show the same trend, with greater dropout rates within the Hispanic, Students with Disabilities, Economically Disadvantaged, and English learner groups. These trends are not unique to Henrico. Gaps are also seen in the state-level data, with certain groups having lower graduation and higher dropout rates than other groups, particularly for English learners and Hispanic This table shows the same information, except as a one-year comparison change from 2018. Slight one-year declines were seen among the Black, Students with Disabilities, Economically Disadvantaged, and English learner groups, with the Hispanic subgroup experiencing the greatest decline of 9.5 percentage points. Dropout rates trends are fairly consistent with the graduation rate data, showing groups with declining graduation rates with increasing dropout rates.
Good afternoon. I have three slides to share with you. My first slide captures what we do for all students to ensure that they, to ensure that they get off to a great start to high school. My second slide summarizes the Tier 2 and Tier 3 supports that we provide to students in grades 9 through 11. And my third and final slide highlights the supports we provide to students who are in their fourth year of high school and are at risk for not graduating. Although we are here to discuss cohort graduation and dropout rates that are associated with our high schools, we know the journey to graduation begins long before a student enters the 9th grade. All principals continue to maintain strong feeder pattern connections with elementary and middle schools to ensure that our students are prepared for the transition to each level on their path to graduation. All rising 9th graders participate in a transition program to get acclimated to high school. Some of our high schools include an additional layer of support by connecting 9th graders to peer mentors. During the transition programs, 9th graders are encouraged to get involved in clubs or sports. Research says that students feel a deeper connection and a sense of belonging to their school when they are part of something beyond their assigned classes. Clubs, sports, and the various activities that are available throughout our high schools provide students with opportunities to meet and to connect with students who have similar interests. Middle and high school counselors work collaboratively to ensure that our rising 9th graders are able to articulate their interests, which will drive their scheduling choices. Traditionally, 8th graders learned about specialty centers, career and technical education programs, other courses and electives. Through our feeder connections and our high school redesign, we intend to expand these opportunities to learn about high school programming to students and families as early as elementary school. The Virginia Continuous School Improvement Planning Process, which all schools utilize to set purposeful goals, is designed to engage school teams in the improvement process. Through this process, schools utilize data and take a team approach to identify student strengths and areas to target. Each school is intentional, and will be even more intentional this school year, as it relates to creating and following through on plans to address specific concerns. We know that classroom teachers are the most important factor contributing to student achievement. For this reason, we are committed to making sure that all of our students receive quality Tier 1 instruction. The new high school schedule allows for teachers to have more time to plan engaging lessons and to also focus on individual needs of every student. Based on visits to every high school this year, I'm seeing teachers lead more engaging We recognize that many students need support beyond what we provide to all high schoolers. On the screen, you will see targeted Tier 2 and Tier 3 supports that address the academic and social-emotional needs of our students. School counselors and administrators go into each school year with lists of students who are behind in credits and are, excuse me, and are at risk of not graduating on time. They use these lists to intentionally schedule and sequence courses to allow for students to get caught up on classes where they did not receive passing grades. This year, we were also able to provide one of our high schools with an additional school counselor who will help to lessen the caseload of each member of that school counseling team. The additional counselor will also work with students on developing necessary soft skills that will make them more marketable for employers. All high schools have carved out time during each school day for remediation or enrichment. Teachers and building leadership teams are more intentional about providing students with targeted tutoring and support. As a school division, we offer credit recovery through Edge Annuity, the Center for Diversified Studies, and through evening school. School counselors work closely with students and families to develop plans for credit recovery. In addition, we also have the PACE program, which provides opportunities for overaged students entering high school to earn additional credits. This year, administrators will be more purposeful about checking interim and quarterly grades to ensure that if students are falling behind, they receive immediate support. We don't intend to wait for students to fail. Safety nets will be in place much sooner to catch students before it's too late. On the social-emotional side, all high schools will put more of an emphasis on checking daily attendance and working with students and their families if they start to see patterns of poor attendance. All high schools have developed attendance plans that include Tier 1, Tier 2, and Tier 3 strategies. Five of our comprehensive high schools are working with our Virginia tiered systems of support with the intention of support with the intention of adding additional structures and supports to meet the needs of their students, based on challenges that have been identified by their staffs. Some of our schools offer the Bliss Program for Exceptional Education Students who have challenges with discipline. We also offer social-emotional support services to students who struggle emotionally. Last, but certainly not least, we have a partnership with communities and schools who work with school staff to provide direct services to specific students. I've recently gotten involved with communities and schools, and my goal is to see if we can't cast a wider net to reach more students through this program. If students are in their fourth year of high school and are not quite on track to graduate, the supports that we provide become a little more intense. We offer SOL tutoring throughout the school day for students who still need to pass SOLs in order to graduate. And students also have access to even more credit recovery opportunities in night school. School staffs meet weekly or bi-weekly to discuss these students and how to best support them. Supports are targeted and specific to a student's individual needs. Our schools do an outstanding job of getting to know their students, which is critical to the success of our young people. We strongly believe that these connections and redesigning the high school experience for students will help to improve our graduation rates. Our goal is not just to get students across the stage. We want all students to truly graduate prepared to be enrolled, enlisted, or employed. This concludes our presentation. At this time, we will be happy to entertain any questions you may have.
Thank you. Members of the Board, are there any questions for these presenters? Yes, Mr. Pike.
Dr. Farrell, I appreciate all these pieces that are built in here. And, you know, I believe that one of the most difficult things that the Board does is we sit in expulsion hearings. And when we sit in those expulsion hearings and we are working with a student that is perhaps in high school, and that student is close approaching time to graduate, yet they're still taking ninth-grade classes and the credits aren't there, that leads me to believe that that student, for whatever reason, has fallen through the cracks. And I like hearing purposeful and intentional, and there are a lot of supports built in there. But I don't understand how we can let a student get that far and somebody missed a student, okay? And it doesn't matter to me where the high school is, we missed a student. So, I hope that all these things that you've outlined here will work across the county. And I hope what that equates to is having less students fall in that crack, whatever it may be, so that they truly do become a high school graduate. And I know it's tough work. I've been there, done that. I know how hard it is to reach a challenging student. But it's painful to sit in an expulsion setting and look at that record, and somehow we've missed a student. So, I commend you for putting this together. I, you know, I hope the intentionality and the purpose behind it sticks and that it's sustained throughout a school year. So, thank you for what you're doing. But I hope we don't lose people that fall in the cracks like we have. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Anyone else? Mrs. Cock. What, let me ask you, the uptick that we've had this year, the, excuse me, and the downwardness in the, or the decline in the on-time graduation and the dropout, and the reverse with the dropout, is there anything in particular that we could, because we had a good trend going, and then we took a little step back. Is there anything in particular that we can attribute that towards? And if so, what are we doing about that?
Right. I don't think there's one thing that we can attribute the decrease to. In speaking with high school principals, it's a number of things. It's transciency, it's mental health, it's, you know, discipline, many factors, lack of stability in the home and in the community. So, we're, you know, really looking at, you know, all the resources that I had on the previous screens to try to address individual student needs. I think one of the approaches that we're taking, Mr. Montgomery, is to work with students on an individual basis. You know, it's difficult to cast a wide net to reach all students. So, our schools, our high school principals, and staffs and school counselors are being more intentional about providing specific services to meet individual needs because there really isn't one thing that we can point at to say that, you know, this is the reason that we've had an increase in dropouts.
Well, I think, you know, it's important, I think we all like to look at trends because that shows a long-term progression. But probably what happens is you get to a place where we're roughly 1 out of 10 are graduating on time, I mean, 9 out of 10 are graduating on time. So, we do, if we're going to change that 1 out of 10 that aren't, it has to be very direct. I think as Mr. Pike was alluding to as well, it has to be very direct, very hands-on, and, you know, the 9 out of 10 you could probably do with some broad strokes, keep doing the support that we're doing. But if we're going to be able to reach more of those others, it's going to have to, I think it is going to have to take what you're describing, and it's going to take, if there needs more support from the Board, you know, now's the time to be working with the superintendent to ask for those things, so that we can try to find a way to support you as well.
Sir, thank you.
Yep, very much so. Anyone else?
I was just going to add then, so, I mean, if we're going to be working intentionally one-to-one, then we're going to need more supports and more hands on deck to be doing this, too. Are you thinking of more mental health supports that we'll need in schools? Or where do you think that the additional staffing should be?
Well, I won't go there just yet. First and foremost, we need to make sure that we're utilizing the resources that we have to fidelity, and really taking a look at all that we have in our buildings to maximize each and every person. So, we'd like to start there as schools in a process of, you know, truly developing their VSIP plans. And if there are needs for additional resources, then I'll certainly communicate with Dr. Tig and my direct supervisor. But for now, I think we'd like to look at how we're utilizing what we currently have.
Great, thank you.
Anyone else? And is it fair to say that, so, let's just go back to that 9 out of 10 graduating on time, so 1 out of 10 are not. Is it, are there some gates along the way between the 9th and the 10th grade, the 10th and the 11th, and the 11th and the 12th that, you know, maybe we can identify earlier to get to, rather than have to, you know, some of the remediation at the end? I think you have to touch it all along the way. But are there, does it appear that there's some things that are, that people are getting off track early, or is it sort of linear across all three years, four years?
It's usually early. You know, students typically begin that process in the ninth grade. So, again, we're trying to be more intentional about, you know, really reaching those ninth graders earlier, making sure that if students are struggling in their classes, we're providing immediate support, and we're not waiting for them to receive a failing grade at the end of a school year. So, really, ninth grade is critical, and we're trying to do more to address that.
Okay. Well, that's, I think that's, maybe I missed that, but that's good information to know because it's not just we got to fix 25% each year. It's that, really, if you get in there early, probably the first two years, you're going to, it's more valuable than waiting and helping later, so, very good. Yes, Mr. Pike? No, please, please.
Those youngsters that, that high school years, particularly those ninth graders, one thing that always runs through my old brain is can they read? And how important that is to a youngster throughout. But if they're in a ninth-grade class and they're still struggling with reading, I would surely hope that all those things that are outlined there somehow, some way could address that. And I know we do all kinds of testing and have all kinds of data, but I always wonder if reading is the pivot point there for a youngster. So, I'm done. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Hinton and Dr. Farrell, and also to the Board for your excellent questions. And staff and I have certainly taken note of a number of issues you've raised related to this, and would just reiterate some of what's come up before. But we definitely see, you know, success towards graduation as a result of a K-12 experience. And so, all of those things that lead a student to ninth grade, whether it's building those essential literacy skills, or helping our students see more early that academic career planning process, so they see the journey, not just piecemeal, what they're happening, what's happening for them in elementary, what's happening in middle, and then, you know, sort of falling into high school, trying to really be more purposeful about that journey and looking for supports along the way. Really, that student-centered approach, I think, is the difference going forward to, as you say, meet that one student. If we're thinking 9 out of 10, we want 10 out of 10. So, we'll keep pushing on that and look forward to hopefully reporting some gains in those numbers this time next year. All right, for the next item, we have Sherri Gumpel coming forward. She's going to share with you some proposed revisions to Policy P-6-09-014, which is Crisis Plans and Threat Assessment Procedures. Welcome.
Thank you, Dr. Cashwell. Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. The proposed change of this policy ensures compliance with state code that requires school divisions to address threat assessments and policy. Henrico County has an outstanding record of being on the forefront of crisis and safety management, and this change aligns our policy with our practice. This policy has been posted on the Division website for public comment and will be presented to you for consideration of approval on November 14th.
Thank you very much. Members of the Board, are there any questions or comments regarding this proposed revision? Well, very good. If there are any, let's try to get them to the superintendent before it's considered, so there'll be a chance to be answered. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, for the next item, I'm recommending that the School Board accept the Individual Student Alternative Education Plan, or ISAEP, grant award funding of $50,318.98 from the Virginia Department of Education.
Members of the Board, is there a motion to accept the Individual Student Alternative Education Plan Grant Award?
So moved.
Moved by Reverend Cooper, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Cock. All those in favor in the cap, saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? The grant is accepted.
Thank you. Next, I'm recommending that the School Board accept the Richmond Road Runners Club and Metropolitan Richmond Sports Backers Grant Award of $400 to support the Jaguars in Motion Running Program at Johnson Elementary School.
All right. Members of the Board, is there a motion to accept the Richmond Road Runners Club? I felt like a sports announcer. And Metropolitan Richmond Sports Backers Grant Award.
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Cock. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Reverend Cooper. All those in favor in the cap, saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? The grant is accepted gladly.
All right, thank you. Next, I'm recommending that the School Board accept the $60,000 Virginia Reading Corps Grant Award from the Virginia Department of Education to Glen Lee Elementary School.
All right. Members of the Board, is there a motion to accept the Virginia Department of Education Reading Corps Grant Award?
So moved.
Moved by Reverend Cooper, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Pike. All those in favor in the cap, saying aye? Any opposed? Eyes have it, the grant is accepted. Can we look forward to that being put to work at Glen Lee?
Yes. Next, the Superintendent recommends the School Board accept the First LEGO League Grant Award of $500 from the American Institute of Aeronautics and Astronautics, also known as AIAA, and the Boeing Company to Echo Lake Elementary School.
Thank you. Members of the Board, is there a motion to accept the First LEGO League Grant Award?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Cock. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Pike. All those in favor in the cap, saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Eyes have it, the Legos are accepted.
All right. And finally, for grant approvals this afternoon, I'm seeking your approval for the Head Start Grant Funding Request in the amount of $1,420,520 for the 2020-2021 Grant Cycle. This is for the budget period of February 1, 2020, to January 31, 2021, for Head Start.
Thank you. Members of the Board, is there a motion to approve the acceptance of the 2020-2021 Head Start Grant Funding as outlined by the Superintendent?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Pike. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Reverend Cooper. All those in favor in the cap, saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Eyes have it, the grant is accepted. Thank you.
All right, thank you. The next item is an update related to our redistricting process, and Mr. Justin Briggs will come forward and provide us that update, again, wanting to make sure we're keeping the Board as well as our public updated on this process, which is ongoing and will be ongoing for the next few months. So, Mr. Briggs?
All right. Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, and Dr. Cashwell. I am here today to provide a brief update on the redistricting project. We held our second set of work sessions on Monday and Wednesday night. Cropper GIS provided two new options for each level that were based on the committee's previous work as well as input from the public. The committee spent the evening refining the new maps, which Cropper GIS will use to draft new options. I would like to note that these options are works in progress and that no final decisions have been made at this time. The committees will be meeting again on October 23rd at Hungry Creek and on October 25th at Newbridge, and this will be the last set of meetings before the first public information sessions in November. Do you have any questions?
Members of the Board, are there any questions? So, we have the material that was provided, so this is the information that's been provided at all the public?
That is from, that is the information that was provided at the last two work sessions, yes.
So, the Board now has everything that's been provided at the work sessions, correct?
Sir.
You're keeping us current on that. All right, very good. I would just note that there are folks that occasionally reach out to Board members or others in seeking information or to provide input or just to meet regarding this, and the process is one that is very open and very available to every member of the public, whether you're an individual, or a group, or a corporation, or a developer who has an interest in providing your input. And so, we would encourage those who have an interest in doing so, that they do so. It's much more meaningful when it's done in public, so everybody has a chance to review it and understand it and factor it into the considerations. And so, I know that it's most appropriate to do it that way, and so, anything that's shared with me, I certainly share with everyone else. So, and I know that everybody else does that as well. But I encourage anybody, and if you are, if there's somebody out there, or if any of us are approached by anybody, it's perfect timing because we have a series of meetings coming up, and everybody has a chance to express their views on what is the best option. So, we really appreciate that feedback at the public sessions. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mrs. Cock.
Isn't there also a place online where people can post their comments and that the committee looks at those comments and making their decision?
Yes, the committee has access to the, all the feedback that has been submitted via the form. It is a link on the redistricting website.
So, that's a good way to get, or for groups or citizens to get their point out there to the committee members, so it can be considered.
Absolutely. That way, everybody can see it.
Very good point. And it also avoids the risk of someone misunderstanding what is being shared. When it's shared in public, everybody can hear it at once and come to a conclusion whether, or how much weight to give to it, so, thank you very much. Anyone else regarding the effort? Okay, very good. Thank you. Thanks for the update.
Good work.
Thank you. And for the final item, I'm requesting the School Board accept the 2.306-acre Quick Claim Parcel at East Beale Street that is being granted by Henrico County, Virginia.
All right, members of the Board, are there any questions regarding this Quick Claim Parcel? This would be in order to do some of the work that, the county owns it, and the county's conveying it to the schools so we can continue with the efforts we have at Highland Springs High School.
That's correct.
All right. Members of the Board, is there a motion that we adopt the Superintendent's recommendation for acceptance of the East Beale Street Quick Claim Parcel adjacent to Highland Springs High School?
So moved.
Thank you, Reverend Cooper. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Pike. All those in favor in the cap, saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? The Quick Claim deed is accepted. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the Board. That concludes items from the Superintendent.
Thank you. Is there any unfinished business by any member of the Board? Is there any new business anyone would like to share?
Yes, Mr. Montgomery. Just quickly, I want to thank Mr. Anderson for coming to the Gifted Education Advisory Council's first meeting this year. He gave an outstanding presentation. If you can give an outstanding presentation... If you can give an outstanding presentation over for you. And, but we appreciated him being there, and he also gave good counsel regarding bylaws and some of the things that need to be done there. So, we, they appreciated Mr. Anderson being there, and I did, too. So, thank you.
Thank you for sharing that, and thank you, Mr. Anderson, for your, I'm not sure what it was, a riveting presentation. Anyone else have anything to offer for the good of the cause? Yes, Mrs. Cock?
I do. I just want to say I serve on the Recreation and Parks Advisory Commission, and I would just like to congratulate the Parks and Recs Department for earning accreditation through the Commission for Accreditation of Parks and Recreation Agencies, and that's through the National Recreation and Parks Association. It was a two-year process that staff went through, and it's basically national best practices and standards. But what makes it, I think, so distinct, it's only 178 localities across the nation that have this mark, this distinction, and Henrico County now is only the 12th in Virginia.
Awesome.
So, congratulations.
And I'm sure it was well-deserved. They do a great job, both supporting our schools and our citizens. All right, is there anything else? Well, it looks like we have plenty of time for those who need to go get gussied up, to get gussied up for tonight's Henrico Education Foundation Dinner. When you see me, you will not recognize me. So, if there's no further business, we have our next...
Do we have to see you at all?
You will see me, but you won't recognize me. We have our upcoming meeting, our next meeting is October 24. Our work session is set to begin at 2:00. Our monthly meeting is at 6:30. Those will both be here at Newbridge Learning Center. The meeting for, the meeting time for the work session is subject to adjustment. There being no further business, this concludes our meeting.